Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Anderson, Buchi, Christensen, Collenden, De Pietro, Furlong, Kennon, Lucy, Matheson, Nester, Sputterfalle.
Here. First order of business is Mayor. See him? Okay. We're going to skip out of order. Nobody doesn't mind. I don't see the mayor in front of us. So we will go down to Counselor Christensen. The request you had with -- yeah, but is Ellie here? This'll be easier. So Counselor Christensen requested that the Human Resources Director Ellie Cushion present to the City Council. So Ms. Ellie Cushion, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Ellen. Members of the council. Counselor Christensen has asked that I come before you tonight to just give you a briefing on the new state ethics law that's just been enacted recently by Governor Patrick and what it mandates that we do going forward as public employees. It changes the State Conflict of Interest Law that contains mandatory state ethics training for all public employees and distribution of the Conflict of Interest Law to each of our employees. It imposes obligations on city and town clerks primarily to carry this out, but it also requires the mayor to designate a liaison. In this case, it would be me, and I believe that's on the agenda a little later tonight. And I would be a liaison to the State Ethics Commission to make sure that we know what is expected of us and how to implement the provisions in the new law. We have to ensure that all of our employees are required to take this training, and that includes not only full-time employees, but part-time, intermittent, appointed and elected officials, people who are paid or unpaid, volunteers, and consultants. It includes those with who we have contracts, snowplow drivers, but not store employees with who we do business. So in our office, in the Human Resources Office, we currently already, when we meet with new employees, we hand out the Conflict of Interest Law for the state and ensure that they understand it and ask that they review it, sign off on it. You know, they get a copy of the sexual harassment policy, they get HIPAA notice which talks about protected health information and their privacy rights. And with the expanded law, we'll now be required to keep record of their understanding and their receipt of the Conflict of Interest Law. It's required of the city clerks, and I hope that Karen and I can work out how we keep records as we figure this out as we go along. It's a very big undertaking for all the cities and towns, and thankfully, the State Ethics Commission has extended its deadline for everyone to be trained by April of this year as opposed to December 28th of this year, which is where it started out. And until all the details are working out, including a potential change to the training that they're looking at so that it's more municipal-focused than state-focused, after the initial deadline, we'll be required to provide training every two years and within 30 days of employment for anyone working with the city. The regulations call for using the training that's available now, however, and until such time as it may change. So the training results in producing an online certificate that confirms that someone's completed review of the parts of the law. There's a hypothetical question, and there's about four potential answers. And you're asked to pick the answer. If you get it wrong, you go back to the previous, and if you get it right, there's about 30 questions. So we're required to keep record of each of these certificates as each of our employees take training and retain them for six years. I took the training last week, and it went pretty smoothly, but I'm already a former state employee, so that the job descriptions and titles and the scenarios I was in training too, so you know, I know the state ethics law. I think that with municipal employees, it would be nice to see them change so that it's more specific to municipal titles and the type of work we do. I think it would be easier for people to relate to it. So I hope to be in touch with Karen Anderson, our city clerk, to be kept informed of updates and work with her as she gets information from the City Clerks Association. And I've asked Anthony Rodriguez, the IT Director, to meet with me. My hope is that I'd be able to better manage this online process if we could have a dedicated Internet site that we could, you know, use to train and manage all this information for our employees. And that's the overview. Any questions?
Thank you, Ellen. I have lights that are on, so I have a few lights. First light was Counselor Christensen. Counselor Christensen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think the appointing responsibility is the City Council, so you know, I'd like to make a motion that we do appoint our Human Resources Director as the liaison to the State Ethics Commission. This is a very important discussion that we're having. The question I would have to the Director at this point, and I know it's early on in the process, but do you anticipate any new costs in order to accomplish the mission that's behind this law?
Not at this time. I mean, obviously, you know, the Xeroxing of the law, you know, and ensuring that we are handing it out every two years, although again, if we had a site dedicated, an Internet site where it was available online for people, it would probably be better managed that way than, you know, printing costs, things like that. Time is always cost, the time. A lot of people may not use the Internet. We'd have to have dedicated kiosks or carols so that we could help people go through the process online, you know, in a group of, you know, six or so. And again, I'd have to sit down with Anthony to be able to work those type of logistics out.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. President, I think exposing, you know, our entire organization to this law will be a good thing for us, and I do want to compliment our Human Resources Director for not even wincing when presented with this challenge. She immediately was interested and was willing to accept if the council so chose as her to be the liaison to the State Ethics Commission, so I do want to compliment Ellie for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. You do have a motion. Do you mind for discussion?
Of course.
I do have a light. Counselor? Counselor Neil Anderson?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Ellie is also a former state employee. I'm somewhat familiar with the ethics rules and all, but can you give us some of the highlights of what the change is to the old way and what might be in store for us now with these changes?
Well, actually, the only changes really is to ensure that everyone gets copy of what the State Conflict of Interest Law reads about how we do business, how we conduct ourselves, and that this training occurs, you know, the state ethics law training. And it literally is about 30 hypothetical situations and how you would handle yourself. Everything from receiving Christmas presents that, you know, have a certain monetary value to it to when you go out to dinner and who pays and, you know, again, it's very specific and--
So it sounds like it's a requirement to bring municipal employees up to speed with what state employees already would know about.
Right. And again, as much as we initially give this information to employees when they come into service with the city, it really puts us on the carpet in terms of ensuring that we're continually reminding people, training people, and that they understand their obligations.
Yeah, thank you. I think certainly something that we all should be briefed about and reminded because it's very important that we do follow all these ethics rules. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other questions? We do have a motion at table by Counselor Christensen. It's, if you're following along, it's already on the docket, so if there's no other questions, we can entertain Counselor Christensen's motion to adopt--
Adopt.
--the Human Resource Director to be assigned liaison to the State Ethics Commission to assuring employee participation ethics. So on that motion, Counselor Christensen's motion seconded by Counselor Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none and hearing none, motion is adopted. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Have another hat.
Next order of business, the mayor has requested to come speak to the City Council with regards to discussing the Pay Your Throw program. So all rise for the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, it being the one-year anniversary of the Pay Your Throw program and keeping in mind that the citizenry will get to vote on an important ballot initiative that comes up for the November 3 election, I thought it was appropriate to come down and give you the knowledge that we have one year into this program and try to, as best we can, educate the public as to what the program has meant in the course of a year, what we think some of the benefits are from our perspective, and certainly what some of the ramifications would be in the event that the program was to be eliminated and reversed in any way. Before I get into the specifics of what we've experienced during the course of the year, we should back up just a little bit and I think take into account what the backdrop to our endorsement and adoption of this program was in around April and May of last year. The Solid Waste Management Ordinance, which is Section 9.26 and the following sections in our ordinance, takes up a fair amount of space. The community has been at solid waste management for most of its modern history. Typically, like many communities, especially in urban areas, the city of Malden went from a staffed and funded internally effort at picking up trash to contractually taking it out of city services and ultimately modifying in a couple of ways I'm going to refer to. But in general, the city picked up everything that was at the curb for many, many years from any resident that would put it out there. At some point in the not-too-distant past, we went to a twice-monthly recycling effort under my administration coming in early on, probably going back past 10 years now, we went to a weekly recycling program. The ordinance was modified again by requiring a sticker for white goods, which many of our surrounding communities had kind of done in advance for us, whether it was a refrigerator or washer or dryer that was put out on the sidewalk. There's now a sticker requirement for that as many other communities require. We went to a lawn bag program somewhere along that chain of events over the past decade or so, and then ultimately also adopted through the efforts of the DPW a quarterly hazardous waste recycling program that is run out of the DPW facility on a Saturday morning four times a year. A couple of years back, we went to a modified Pay Your Throw program. Those units, residential units consisting of more than six, together with any commercial areas that we picked up, were put on their own Pay Your Throw program. They could get the bags from us that were sponsored by the city of Malden, or they in fact could contact their own hauler and be responsible for hauling away their own trash. All the while, condominium owners, condominium associations have been responsible for removal of their own trash. So a typical base year, after all of those efforts, found us with somewhere between 22 tons to 24 tons of waste that was picked up by the contractor, currently JRM Associates, and then paid for by disposing of it at the incinerator facility in Resco in Saugus on an escalating rate on tonnage, generally starting in the high 60s, but today's rate, as it is for all other communities, is about $78 per ton of waste taken there and disposed of. So a base year, as we were coming into considering this program, as I said, required that we have a contractual obligation for hauling, and that was to JRM. That's a 10-year contract. That number annually has not changed, but in general, it ranged between about $1.6 and $1.7 million, depending upon whether JRM would assist the DPW with any number of other activities. And typically, we budgeted about, for say, the past five fiscal years, $2.1 million for disposal at Resco. Now, that was a conservative number and always took into account. We never really knew how much stuff we would pick up on an annual basis. I don't know if we ever actually hit the full 2.1, but general estimates allowed us to budget for that on an annual basis. As we approached the establishment of the 2009 budget, I think we, together with other communities, but I think in particular my administration and the City Council, was aware that there were some fiscal challenges ahead at the Commonwealth's level. And in fact, they did turn out during the course of 2009 to be true, as we just realized. We suffered through, for the second time in less than a decade, a round of what I call 9-C cuts in the middle of the fiscal year, where the Commonwealth had to reduce the amount of aid to the city of Malden and other cities and towns in the Commonwealth. Our particular reduction in 2009 ended up being $1.5 million. And from 2009 to the establishment of 2010, the reduction in Malden's local aid has been over $6 million. And taking away the dedicated school aid that comes to us and really measuring what is left over in discretionary aid, over the last five fiscal years, our discretionary aid, after our assessments, so what we call our net discretionary aid, has gone from about $5.3 million to now just above $1 million. So when all accounting is in, our community, like many others, has taken a very severe hit in the amount of aid it receives from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we all understand that the fiscal situation that the Commonwealth finds itself in, but it flows down to cities and towns. And in our case, I think we did our best to be able to forecast what was going to take place in 2009. So as part of that, one of the programs that we did look at for additional aid and to be able to potentially cut costs was the Pay Your Throw program and putting the 2009 budget together. As you know, we had a major debate about what we thought it would mean financially. We ultimately rested on the fact that we thought, based upon the servicing 15,000 households with Pay Your Throw that were currently receiving curb pickup, the amount of tonnage that we had in a typical year, again, anywhere in that 22,000 ton to potentially on the very high side, 24,000 tons, that the program would probably break one of two ways. Either people would be required to buy a certain number of bags in order to keep that amount of tonnage on the curb and being picked up, but hopefully, there'd be some economy. People would take up the recycling effort at a pace that would allow us to save some money and hopefully not cost the homeowner so much money. And it turned out that our forecast, although very accurate in terms of the general outcome of the program, was lopsided in what we thought our revenue would be versus what we thought the savings would be for the reduced tonnage. So we estimated about $2.5 million in bag sales, which came to about a $4, an average $4 assessment per week or cost per week per household if all 15,000 households were there, kind of keep their trash generation habits in place. And we thought that recycling might add maybe $400,000 to $500,000 in savings on the disposal side, and it ended up that kind of the reverse happened, that in fact, during the course of the fiscal year, we ended up with closer to $1.2 million in bag sales. But because of our ability to be able to pinpoint our disposal cost and actual savings of $1.4 million to the line item for disposal, but probably about $700,000 to $800,000 in actual tonnage paid for Resco savings. So in many ways, the program ended up being a success in both ways. We realized many of our financial goals in the budget, but we also realized that people change their habits much more rapidly than we expected. Much less was being put in the bag and on the curb to be taken away and disposed of, and much more was put in recycle bins. Our recycle tonnage, for instance, went up greater than 50% over the year, whereas our actual tonnage, our recycle tonnage went up over 70% for the year. Our disposal tonnage was down 50%. But we have now had the advantage of several more months. As you know, we operated the program on a three-quarter of a year basis. We implemented it in October of last year, even though we adopted it as of July 1st of the 2009 fiscal year and have subsequently adopted it in 2010. But we've now had the advantage of one full calendar year of experience. And the results are pretty much along these lines. For a calendar year, we've realized $1.7 million in bag sales. That includes our residential sales and sales through the Malden Housing Authority. We've saved about $800,000 in actual tonnage reduction. Again, having been able to recalibrate the Resco line item for fiscal year 2010, we've actually reduced the line item by $1.4 million. So in essence, we've had the advantage of the revenue, the advantage of the actual tonnage savings, about $800,000, and the advantage of recalibrating the line item that held the pad in the event that tonnage was greater than expected. And really, in the course of constructing fiscal year 2010, we now have about a $3 million swing in the course of revenues and expenses. Now, obviously, that $3 million has been poured back into the construction of the fiscal year 2010 budget. It pays for things like police department services, fire department services, library services, DPW services, sidewalk, park, and other public improvement programs, and also school services. The point I want to drive home is that it's an important financial underpinning of our budget now. Take into account that in fiscal year 2010, and I've provided you all with information that is coming out from the various municipal services that track the Commonwealth's budget, we know that in 2010, we may now experience a further 9-C cut in local aid, which would be daunting at best to be able to meet. But I think having put this program in place and now having the advantage of at least $2.5 million in actual benefit, but now a budgeting advantage of about $3 million, there would be almost no way that we could continue the level of service that we know of today in departments like police, schools, fire, other public services, and the public improvement programs that we all want to embrace and put into every neighborhood without having this program being an essential underpinning of what it is we do from now and going forward. So I would hope that the citizenry, when reflecting on the need financially for the program and having us be able to try to do everything we can do around the quality of life, now have had a full year experience with the program on the street. One of the things we promised to do was continue to keep our streets clean, and I'm proud of the effort that the DPW has put in over the last calendar year in having this program go off smoothly. I don't think there's a neighborhood that can complain about the level of cleanliness or the level of effort that has been put in to keep things the way they were or even better than before the program went into place. And now having the actual experience of what it means to our household budget. You know, if you divide that $1.7 million in bag revenue by the 15,000 households, and it's probably a little bit more than that, but we consider that there may be another number of households who may not participate, but the actual number of households who were being serviced before the program was somewhere between 15,500 and closer to 16,000. When you do that division, the average cost, and we understand that some families, you know, have to take on a little bit more than others, but the average cost comes pretty close to $150 a year. The council did some sensible things in listening to the public as to how to tweak the program. A dollar bag for half the size of the original $2 bag that was proposed has been out on the street. It's a very well-bought item from all we can tell from the vendors. So for those families that don't have a need to put 33 pounds of waste on the sidewalk every week, there's a $1 advantage there, and we think that probably goes a long way into making up that average of less than $150 per year per household. We also have tried to reach out with Tricap to make sure we had a kind of a safety net provision for any family who absolutely could not afford doing it, and we've asked them to intercede with anyone who they thought was in that condition. And we would, through the council's effort, I think, again, funded $25,000 worth of bag purchases to subsidize any family that was in that particular experience. So as you know, I'm a proponent of the program, and I'm here to say unequivocally that it is working. It is an important thing. We understand the hardship that asking for any more money imposes on families in tough economic times, but I do believe it's being put to good use. I do believe we have as tight a budget as we can fashion to do the kinds of things we want to do to keep the quality of life at the level that it's at. I do believe that erasing the program will cause this council and my office to make some extremely difficult decisions. And there's always a lot of hyperbole used when there's cutbacks looming, especially the headlines that you see about how other communities are handling the level of aid that they either have or are not getting. I try not to talk in those terms, but I do know that we've done everything that we can to eliminate every piece of nonessential cost. I do believe we have the kinds of staffing level that are important to us in the police department, in the fire department, in our DPW. I do believe we're doing the right things in our schools, and without this $2.5 to $3 million, I do believe that our ability to be able to continue to do those kinds of things will be in jeopardy. And I do believe it'll be compounded, at least for this upcoming fiscal year, what we'll experience in the middle of fiscal year 2010 and what we'll likely to see as local aid numbers from the state for the beginning of fiscal year 2011, which is, you know, a short six months in planning away here, that without what we're doing for ourselves locally, we'll be putting our ability to be able to do the kinds of things that our citizens expect in jeopardy. So, Mr. President, I'm glad to take any questions on the program, and you know, I know it has been a controversial and difficult topic for people to deal with, and I thank everybody for the level of effort that has been put in to make it come out as a successful program.
Thank you, Mayor. First question, Counselor Gary Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just first ask our residents as well as our councils if they could place their phones on, vibrate, you know, just out of respect to the discussion that I think is about to ensue on the program. We would appreciate it. I think my second question, Mr. Mayor, I know we've had many animated discussions. You've even started bringing in other people when we now talk about the Pay Your Throw program. But I think what I'd like to ask you, you know, now that you've presented the information to the members here tonight, do you also intend to have maybe a larger forum outside in the community much as we did a year ago? Or I think some of the councils talked about going ward to ward. I know time's short before the election, but I think it might be helpful to, you know, maybe have an evening dedicated where, you know, not only we could ask the questions, but maybe some of the residents at large could. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that or you're thinking about doing that.
I don't have any specific proposals on that, Counselor. You know, last year, clearly, we followed the council's lead in holding the two public sessions after the program was embraced, and I think some of the feedback from those sessions ended up helping the council. sessions ended up helping the council, you know, make amendments to the program, you know, beyond what was, the way it was originally laid out. I'd be glad to participate. We've, I've been to a series of neighborhood meetings over the course of the summertime. Councilor Furlong, I told Councilor Anders, and I'd be glad to attend the forum that he had down at the senior center. I attended Councilor Kinnon's neighborhood meeting for Ward 6, so I'm there anytime the council suggests that the public either needs more input or would be interested in getting a little bit more feedback, whatever the council would entertain, I'd be glad to assist with.
Okay, yeah, just with respect, those meetings, you did mention those were on, I believe, public safety issues. This would be more...
They were on a little bit of everything. Other people had, but they were oriented toward public safety.
You don't have to tell me that, I know that. But I just thought, in general, to dedicate an evening, because, you know, you do hear things from different parts of the city. Some say they think it works, some say they don't, some have suggestions. So for what it's worth, I was just curious as to, you know, again, whether or not the administration was planning an evening...
Not planning it, but I'd be glad to assist and participate.
All right. The second question, the infamous, the flyer that was received over the weekend. I understand this came from you.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
As in the past, you know, when I am passionate about an issue that I think is important to the community, I've put my own campaign money into ballot initiatives. I did it for the Community Preservation Act ballot question that was before the community, probably, you know, going back at least eight years now. That one wasn't very successful, but I did invest my own campaign time and effort. There's, that flyer was paid for from my campaign fund. There will be another flyer that'll follow that I think presents most of the same information that I have given you this evening. It's more along the lines of the actual raw numbers of what the program has meant after one year, but the funding is totally paid for out of the campaign of Mayor Richardson.
Okay. In the flyer itself, just a couple of questions on the content.
Absolutely, yeah.
The first fact, it talks about the other cities and towns that have adopted this.
Yes.
Now, it doesn't list who they are, but could you tell us, comparatively speaking, towns like Malden, who has adopted it?
Yeah, I would say, again, there are modified versions of pay-as-you-throw. I mean, I've come to learn much more about these programs than I, you know, than I had reason to have knowledge of in the past. There are all kinds of variations on how communities ask their constituents to pay for this particular service. And we can talk about where that authority is, whether it's a fee or a tax, and I do understand that the distinction probably doesn't mean anything, it's a cost to a household. But in general, I would say everyone around us has some form of cost association for the service. The best, not contrary, but contrasting example to us is the City of Melrose. They now have a $275 fee imposed upon homeowners for the cost of taking and disposing of trash. The City of Everett has what is called a recycle bank. That's a program that brings in a contractor who provides bins and incentives for families to recycle. It drives up recycling numbers comparative to ours. Our community happens to exceed the experience that has been put forward in Everett through the recycle bank program. The difference is, the company keeps a certain percentage of the savings, usually anywhere between 60 and 70% of the disposal cost, as I said, the RESCO cost to us. Everett doesn't use RESCO, they use another landfill or disposal location. But the contractor keeps a certain percentage of the money, but it does drive up recycling and it does drive down tonnage. Other communities throughout the Commonwealth have the exact version of pay-as-you-throw we have. For instance, Gloucester just went to it, they had a modified pay-as-you-throw program. They've recently embraced the program exactly the way they do it. Certified bags, sales with the same exact cost, $2. City of Worcester was one of the examples we cited last year as we were taking on the program. City of Brockton. I would say of the 250, I think, communities that are cited in fact, most of them are urban areas. The ones that are left out are, I think, more rural areas. Some communities don't even provide the service, so it's 250 of the 351 actually charge a fee for the service in some fashion, whether it's pay-as-you-throw, modified, or direct cost to the homeowner.
Okay. I know you spoke glowingly about the program. You know, I recognize your passion for it. Now the year has elapsed. Looking back, is there anything within the program that you would change or you think might, should have been done differently?
Well, obviously, I think the outreach to the public, you know, was, you know, if we made a mistake, that was the mistake. We probably could have rolled out the program to the public, explaining the financial circumstance that we found ourselves in, and either ask for feedback, ask for suggestions to modify. I think, you know, if I had had the ability to roll it out over a longer term in a more involved fashion, we probably would have done that. As to how the program operates, I, you know, I do think that we're doing it the model way, you know, the EPA and both EPA and DEP have acknowledged that we are doing it the way nationwide the environmental agencies on both the state and federal level want to see communities do. You know, whether or not we have to get bigger bins for recycling, those are all the kinds of things, I guess, we could consider as we go along. I don't think we could have done much along those lines in rolling it out differently. But, you know, I think we took it off, we looked at a number of other initiatives. I think we forecasted correctly that this is probably going to be the model that many communities adopt, and I don't want to anticipate your question or other questions, Mayor, but we see it as the fair way of doing things, which we mentioned in the pamphlet, and that is, every citizen pays for their share of what the service costs, and every citizen gets the same opportunity to avoid the cost, because we'll take away as much recycling as anybody will put on the sidewalk. So in that way, in contrast to the so-called Melrose model, where it's a flat fee on homeowners, taxpayers, it's fair. You know, it's, every homeowner here pays for what they put on the curb, just like every tenant does. So we think it's a fairer model, and in comparison, in contrast to recycle bank, we think it's the model that's going to survive. You know, as soon as we, and we did do some research on the recycle bank methodology, the clear thing that drove us away from that was, we don't realize the savings. I mean, this is a financial issue for us as much as it is an environmental issue. So we don't realize the savings, and we knew. We didn't know, but we forecasted that the recycling market, which is what the recycle bank model is based on, ebbs and flows. At the particular time that the program was rolled out in Everett, the recycling market was at an all-time high. Recyclers were being paid for the kinds of products that they would bring in to transfer stations. So whether it was the plastic, whether it was tin in the form of cans, glass in bottles or paper, the market there, because of what was going on in the international economy, was driving the market to heights that it had not seen before. The forecast was that it was rapidly descending, and based upon as many people that I could talk to about where the market was going to be, we realized that the recycle bank model, which only provides these incentives and only is based, has its basis on its deal with the participating city, on the recyclers' ability to be able to get out into the secondary market and sell those products. City of Everett has, you know, and that was, and I, it was not a staged concession on the part of Mayor DeMaree. But, you know, I think they are now understanding that they'll probably have to reconsider what it is they hoped to have done with recycle bank, only because recycle bank is now coming back and saying they can't sustain the program as it was originally laid out. They need further concessions in order to be able to continue to make it work. You know, again, in the best of all words, we would try something like that, but clearly, the more than $800,000 tonnage savings, we'd rather have devoted to our own budgetary use rather than having recycle, anybody like recycle bank capture a percentage of it, 60 to 70%.
All right. You're not filibustering me again, are you?
I'm not, Councilor Brockman.
Just a couple more questions.
I know how I like to fill the details.
These are easy ones. Could the council get a copy of the JRM contract? I know we've asked...
Yes.
Gone over that periodically during the past fiscal year, and I don't know if the other councils have, but I have yet to receive a...
Yeah, the JRM contract is currently up for renewal. Obviously, they were on, they had come in, when I, my administration first came in, Laylaw was the curbside provider then. JRM bought out several Laylaw contracts in the municipal area north of Boston, especially. We've had their services in place on a rigid number, under a 10-year basis. We rolled it over for a couple of years, and I think both parties wanted to see where the community was going to be going with this new effort, because it did require that they buy different pieces of equipment in order to handle the recycling, whereas before everything was being picked up and put in a trash hauler.
Okay.
So I think we can give you the contract that they're working off of, and my expectation would be pending the vote and whatever further analysis the council would take from the ballot vote, we would probably begin the renegotiation of their contract.
Okay, and that expires when? When does the contract expire?
It's in a rule, it's really just being held over as of July 1st.
Okay, got it, okay. And then the stats. I know a program of this importance, do you publish the stats on our homepage?
We do, and DEP does as well.
Okay.
And EPA takes a look at the program. They're both looking at, as I said, as a model program, so they track our tonnage reduction...
Okay.
...with RESCO and our recycling tonnage numbers with JRM, who hauls the recycling away. So both of those numbers are looked at very closely by those agencies, as well as by us.
And those are on our homepage, the numbers?
I believe they are.
Yeah, okay. Do you anticipate, let me ask you, November 3rd rolls around, questions voted on, probably can't say, but what's a percentage that would convince you? Because, let's face it, the standard that's in place now, it's going to be very hard to meet by the residents in the community. But what's a percentage that you think would warrant, in your opinion, a revisit of the program?
Well, 6 out of 11, that would be the percentage that would tell me that the tide has turned on it. Look, you hear what I have to say.
Yep.
I'm not making it up. I'm telling you that I do believe we'd be on, if not life support, we'd be heading to the critical stage on our ability to be able to fund crucial services for this community without this kind of an asset in place, this combined asset of reduction and revenue. But we've already gone through a round of cuts for fiscal year 2010. You know, I don't think, unless it was an overwhelming vote, like 80% to 20%, 90% to 10%, you know, I would rather go into everybody's living room, give them the same speech that I'm giving them here, to make them understand that there really is nothing else financially we can do, other than to begin rolling back services that we consider to be crucial. I mean, we're really talking about whether or not library exists in its current function, whether or not the police department is able to keep the kind of people on the street that we want. Fire services would change significantly. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, a healthy percentage of the public understands that it's fair, it's reasonable, and it is crucial to our ability to be able to put a reasonable budget together.
Just two final questions. What if the enterprise fund ends in the deficit?
Yeah, the enterprise fund, we shouldn't, again, I don't want to go on and on, but that is an accounting device. You know, I know a lot of councilors and many of the public wanted to know, you know, if the word, I guess, catchword today is transparency, how the cost and the income is kind of accounted for. So the fund is always going to run into a deficit unless we charge as much for the bags as it costs us to contract for whoever the hauler is, whether it's JRM or anybody else, and whatever our disposal cost is. And we'll never kind of quite get there. $2 a bag, we're going to be funding the cost of the services, hauling and disposal, out of the general budget all the time. It'll be less of a burden than it was before. Before, it was a combined almost $4 million burden, 3.7 to 3.9. You know, right now, as I said, I don't know if we'll ever realize any more than 1.7 in a fiscal year for sales. That's the only revenue we bring in on the program.
Okay.
So it's never going to offset the total cost of providing the service...
All right.
...under the enterprise.
Sure. Just final question, your closing comment, you said, you know, if this program was ever erased...
Yes.
...quote unquote. But what about modified? I mean, there's other discussions, you mentioned a couple on recycle bank, you could have gone, you know, one bag, everything else you pay for, et cetera. There are other ways to accomplish the goals you've outlined.
Yeah, obviously, we can not have the program. All my message is, we've got to account for it in services somewhere. That's, we obviously can do without the revenue. We can do it with, you know, if we go back to the way we used to do it and people's habits, go back to the way it was, we pay, you know, 1.7 to $2 million in, you know, trash disposal fees at RESCO or whatever other, you know, disposal site that we choose. We just have to account for that in other areas of our budget. I mean, we can modify it so that we lower the bag cost, just if you want to make it $1 a bag instead of $2 a bag, take half, take 50% of the 1.7 million dollars, and, you know, we pick it up somewhere else in the budget. We find a cut that, you know, equates to 800, you know, $50,000. I'm here to tell, we just went through the exercise of putting 2010 together. I'm here to tell you, we don't have it, you know, unless we do some very, very serious alteration of one of the core things that we now have left over. We just closed McFadden Manor, very difficult decision for everybody to make. We've relied upon one-time funding of almost $4 million for our reimbursement for the Malden High School program and putting fiscal year 2010 together. We have to repeat that in fiscal year 2011. Any way you shift the equation, you know, can be a tweak to the program. It certainly can be done. We just have to account for it in some other department in operations. Again, we all went through the budget, I don't think, without laying off 10, 15 police officers. We eliminated seven firefighter positions. We cut $2 million from the schools. We took seven positions out of the DPW, and then we eliminated a series of positions in City Hall, you know, about 30 in total, 50 on the school side. We can keep cutting like that, because I think we know, all of us that have put the budgets together, that we're now down to personnel. Personnel is the only discretionary thing that we have at our disposal to reduce expenditures. So it can be modified in any way, we just have to account for it in the budget somewhere.
Yeah, in closing, I would just say, I agree with almost everything you just said, but I would let the councils know, when we voted this, very difficult vote, not just, I think, for the people that voted yes, but also for the people who voted no, because we had to show...
Absolutely.
...where those other funds might come from. But I've since towed the line, tried to explain to the residents what's involved with the program, assisted them, but the only thing I would just take exception with is that, you know, in the flyer, it says it was used to balance the budget, but you must admit, during that year, we were able to add new spending, and we were also able to do some other things in fiscal year 2009 that I thought were outside the realm, because we were told that this was going to help keep everything status quo. So I think that's the disconnect in the community, is that, you know, you know, at one point, we're saying, this is to completely balance our situation, yet, six months later, you know, that we're then doing adjustments that I think some of us... you know, that we're then doing adjustments that I think some of us thought were unachievable during that fiscal year. So I thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to ask as many questions.
And acknowledge, Councilor.
To the membership.
Welcome, Councilor Christensen.
Councilor Patterson?
Counselor Eliz.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming here tonight. If I understand your numbers correctly, eight out of every $20 comes from a recycling waste disposal savings, so 40% of the numbers you're referencing, if recycling behavior perpetuated in the future, would still be captured?
Well, recycling really costs nothing here. The recycling increase is just a way for the citizen to be able to calibrate their own cost at home. The savings, part of the $2.5 million in real impact, and again, about $3 million in budgetary impact, because of a recalibration of the Resco line item, which was standard at $2.1 million, we've saved $800,000 in the reduced tonnage. So we reduced our tonnage from about 21,000 tons to now, a little bit under 11,000 tons. So the actual cost at $78 per ton comes to around that $800,000 actual savings. And in putting together the 2010 budget, we kind of scalped a line item for tonnage disposal at Resco of any excess capacity, and that resulted in our taking about $400,000 more and being able to, you know, account for it in the budget, because we now know we have a real number. So our line item this year for tonnage, for instance, at Resco disposal is $700,000.
So that conceits the $800,000 in savings, plus possibly a buffer that you'd budget extra for?
A buffer that was previously there that is now gone.
Okay. And some of the increased spending that Counselor Christensen referenced?
Yeah, I'd have to get specifics on that. I mean, certainly on the city side, there are, other than the capital programs, and I'm sorry to address his question in your time there, Councilor.
That's okay.
But there's nothing, there are no revisions on the city side, other than our usual round of capital improvements that we try to do in every corner of the city, and that's captioned on our debt and interest line item. We're able to do some creative things with community development block grant funds, Counselor Anderson, Speedway Green Park is done, being done under the stimulus funds that came in under the CDBG program. We borrow money annually out of our water and sewer enterprise fund to be able to do the street and sidewalk program that you see going on. But in terms of actual budget expenses, year over year, '09 to '10, we're way down. You know, I know there was a big debate about whether or not the schools actually did their share of cutting, you know, that the council should have thought that they should have done, especially in fiscal year '09. But, you know, we've reduced in fiscal year 2010, we reduced right across the board, not even taking into account a cost of living increase from one year to the next. The schools line item has been reduced by a flat $2 million. Luckily enough, some of that spending has been backstopped by the stimulus money that the Obama administration has put into education, specifically the special education, SPED program in Title I. So they are falling on a cushion, they did take measures, I think, to begin being prepared for a big, big ramp down, should it occur. They've spent half that stimulus money in the establishment of fiscal year 2010, school department budget, they're using another half, and they were obligated to use the other half, in the establishment of fiscal year 2011. But the X factor here is what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will be turning over to cities and towns in fiscal year 2011 for school operations, together with municipal operations.
Respectfully, Mayor, back to my point, with respect to wages, for example, a lot of Americans were laid off this year.
Correct.
A lot of cities and towns did a wage freeze.
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, you're being paid more this year than last.
Me?
No, you're not.
Counselor, I haven't had a raise in about six fiscal years, if we want to go back and check the budget, but I'm not, certainly not getting paid any more this year.
What are the increases coming out instead?
Well, that's Counselor Christensen's point, I don't know. I'd be glad to debate anyone with him. But let's talk about your point about wage freeze.
Yeah.
There are no raises across the board.
Right.
Being proposed for any employee, anywhere in fiscal year 2010 for the city mall.
Fair enough.
And, and, just, but, you know, I don't want to leave any point unturned. Police Department, you know, the Quinn bill eliminated, you know, at least almost 50% of the benefit that police officers receive. We're one of the few communities that have in our contract that if the state doesn't provide its share, then the officers unfortunately lose 50% of the benefit that they had previously earned. So our offices are going without, not only are they not getting a raise, they've received a pay cut in fiscal year 2010 as a result of the Commonwealth.
Thank you for that clarification. With respect to the accounting, who is the custodian of the accounting, because I've been trying to procure it for, well, since I joined the council? The accounting with the pay-as-you-throw program?
Who is counting for the numbers?
Yes.
Well, the bag provider bills and payments come directly to us from all vendors. So the bag provider, you know, tells us what's been shipped, who's been billed, the payments come directly to the treasury of the city mall, Stop &amp; Shop, for instance, the manufacturer will drop ship the bags, whatever's being ordered by Stop &amp; Shop, to put on their shelves, an invoice goes out immediately with that shipment, the payment comes directly to the city mall. So the $1.7 million consists of what's been invoiced and collected over a calendar year.
Right. With respect to the accounting numbers you referenced tonight, is there a ledger, is there some sort of accounting?
Oh, that would all be done through the controller's office in our, in City Hall.
Okay. And those are available now? Because I've requested them for quite some time now.
I'd be glad to assist if your request is in and somehow it's been delayed, and whatever I can do to help that around, I'd be glad to do it.
Thank you, sir.
City Councilor? You also said Counselor Patterson?
I am, thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Ken, I believe?
Yes.
Counsel Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming down this evening. Just for clarification on this deficit that Counselor Christensen was talking about, he was talking about a budgetary deficit last year, and stop me if I'm wrong, Counselor Christensen, but last year, we budgeted $2.5 million. You may remember, it came in, I think you said 1.2, but after you add in the housing authority money, it came in at almost 1.5. Am I correct about that?
1.2 for the fiscal year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The calendar year is now, another three months.
The 1.2 that you give does not include the housing authority money. We were already at?
I don't know that.
Okay, all right. I do, I have seen the ledgers, I have seen the figures on this, so we were close to 1.5 in fiscal 2009.
9, could be.
So in the, you don't happen to have the tonnage that has occurred between July and the end of September yet, do you?
I have them, I don't have them with me. I can tell you, generally, the tracking has been a 50% reduction across the board.
50%, okay. So given that, given that, at the end of this past year, we were actually in a deficit somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 compared to the budget. That's what, just as a reference, that's what Counselor Christensen was talking about. And that was because the revenue was off by a million to a million something.
Correct.
We clearly, and the whole team is to be commended on this, in terms of the program working, and I did significant study on this prior to going into this thing, this is probably the most successful implementation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You and I clearly differ philosophically on this, as to how this should have been implemented, if at all. But in terms of the success of the program, I don't think there's any denying behind the results we've gotten in Marvin, and that, you know, everybody who's been on the implementation team of that portion is to be commended for what's happened there, from my standpoint. However, given the fact that we had 1.7 million, as you have alluded to, over the course of the whole first fiscal year.
Calendar, calendar.
Calendar, yeah, October 1st to September 30th. The first month of the program, September of last year, we brought in $336,000 worth of revenue. That is a one-time bump. You've never seen another month like that, you will probably never see another month, ever. So the real impact, if you take that on a monthly basis, you subtract it out that, it's about $100,000, we can expect about $1.4 to $1.5 million on an annualized basis. And I just would caution that our current budget today has $2 million in there once again, and to Counselor Christensen's stand, we were already in a deficit above and beyond what we expected of about $500,000 to $600,000. We will run, perhaps, the same type of deficit that is going on. I would ask another question, I think you had your assistant, Mr. Tomajin, working on reducing the cost of the waste, did that actually happen? I know it did, so.
We've signed a new contract for a new disposal site, had reduced rate beyond the, we're down.
Is it around $70 now?
A little over 70s.
Okay. That's another excellent thing that has happened, and based upon the tonnage that's occurred in the first quarter, your estimate of about $700,000 being the cost, if we maintain at the same level as we did last year, you will actually be lower than the $700,000. So, again, another very positive thing.
Positive thing, just to add, you know, an amendment to it, only because the public does what it does in terms of reducing, reducing the amount of waste that's put out and the amount of recycling it does.
The next thing that I wanted to say is, in terms of options, and again, you and I have differed significantly from a philosophical standpoint, I do want to say that if the public were to overthrow this program, there are other options out there to maintain the savings. And one of those things, perhaps, that other communities have indeed done, is provide one free barrel. And beyond that, the public has to pay, just like they do in this current program, to do that. That would maintain, based upon the studies that I've seen, maintain the same type of recycle rate, and therefore, the makeup that we would have to make if the public overthrew what was done here, which is a long shot at best, from my standpoint, probably impossible for the people watching, because we're probably not going to get to this artificial threshold that is 60 years old. But the real makeup that we would have to do, because there are other ways to maintain recycle levels at what they are, would probably be this $1.5 million, not the $3 million that you suppose. That would suppose that we would just go back to the same way that everything that ever, that we did in the past, certainly, and again, I don't mean to speak for myself, but those four of us who oppose this program, there was middle ground for us, and we would certainly be looking for some middle ground if the public did come out and overthrow the whole thing, to maintain the recycling levels, because I don't think there's anybody up here who isn't for the recycling portion of this and the cost savings. So again, we've learned an awful lot, because none of us projected how much savings there would be on the recycle side, it has been an amazing thing, hope that continues. And so that's, that's all I had, I just, I just would like to mention, again, for the council, at this stage, through the first quarter, we are tracking to be at $1.5 million this year, and in the budget, we have $200,000. The savings we have, we may, yeah, we have 2 million in the budget, sorry, and unless something changes, which is very unlikely, we're going to be another $500,000 deficit from the budget, which over the course of two years is about $1 million. Somewhere, that money will have to be made up. It's either A, by raising the bag fee, or B, taking it out of the general fund somewhere else. So we have some serious challenges, as the mayor has alluded to, from the state coming at us, but we have our own internal problem on this issue, and we ought to figure out a way to address it sooner rather than later, because the figures are already coming in very good, I might add, but it is a challenge for us moving forward, so, thank you, and I hope everybody comes out and votes and has their say on this issue, one way or the other. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor, any other questions for the mayor? Any questions for the mayor? Mayor, I just have one question, because I know you've kind of hammered the issue on the recycling, on the hedging, with regards to the new contract other than Resco?
Yes.
I'm assuming there'll be a point where the saturation level or the trash fee will hit a floor, as far as the amount of trash tonnage we're going to have. There'll be always a floor of, obviously, to go out to Resco.
Yes.
There's a new contract, I don't know who the company's with, but does a new contract have a minimum on tonnage?
No.
So there's no minimum?
No.
And then, and how long is the contract on that low 70s?
It's for the first three years at the rate currently signed on for, and there's a cost of living adjustment, and we have several options at five years' piece.
Yeah, because, I mean.
So the rate is in place for the first three years.
So we're out of Resco?
We're out of Resco with Casella.
Casella. Because my always concern was, if I'm Resco, I would see the tonnage decreasing, you know, along with my revenue, and supply-side economics, they say, you know, increase the fee on the tonnage, and we'd have to make that up somehow, regardless of the bag deficit as well.
Actually, it's kind of driven the equation the other way, there is now competition for many years, Resco was the sole provider, and most of our communities in the north greater Boston area contracted over, I think the contract we were recently coming off was 20 years almost, or 15 years. And now there is some competition from the other provider, which is in North Andover. And that has actually driven the pricing down a little bit, but.
Because it's competition, I mean, now it's.
In our case, over $6 or $7 per ton.
So there's no minimum?
No minimum, there was previously a minimum at the Saugus incinerator, but there is none.
And if you don't mind, can you just have the contracts along with the JRM, so that we all, we're on the same page? Any other questions for the mayor? Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, as has been alluded to earlier, this certainly was a very unpopular vote for those of us who voted for it, and primarily, I think you've acknowledged the way it was rolled out with the public only getting the information after we had already gone through it, so that's, I guess we can all acknowledge that was a problem, and so be it, we just have to move forward. There's one thing that I think, I would ask and hope that we'd be able to get this message out to our residents regarding this pay-as-you-throw, and primarily, it has to do with the way people are putting the bags out on the street. I think one of the downsides of the pay-as-you, of using all these bags, is that people have gotten away from putting their trash into a barrel. And I know that's available to people, they can take those blue bags and put them into the barrel, but so many people have been putting the bags themselves out onto the street, and with the rodents that are, you know, the raccoons or what have you, dogs, if they're out running, are able to get into those bags. So I would hope that a message that would go out to our residents is that, as long as we're using those bags, we would encourage people to get back in the habit of using your old trash containers. Many of us still have those trash containers, I certainly do, I put my bags in the trash container, and you don't have the issue with the rodents that will be tearing away at the bag, causing a problem. I'm pleased to see the way the program has rolled out, I think we're all kind of amazed almost that the numbers have gone as well as they had, particularly in the area of recycling, I mean, the amount of reduct- I mean, the amount of reduction in the tonnage that we're paying for, and the increased amount of environmental recycling has been just great. I think we should all be very proud of that. But the message, again, would just be to, folks, use your trash containers, put those blue bags in the trash containers. And if there's any way, if there are other forums that you are having, I would ask that, you know, that would be one of the things to mention, that's something that'll go a long way. So, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for sharing what I think is very good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Councilor Bucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I don't want to obviously repeat any of the comments that have been made here tonight, but it was obviously a difficult decision that I certainly supported and still do. But I do want to obviously take you up on your offer. We have all recognized, or I have recognized, the need for our community discussion should have happened earlier. And in that same vein, I'm certainly inviting you down to Linden. We are having our, I think it may be our fifth or sixth resident meeting, but third on the public safety, but obviously, other topics were outlined to be discussed this Thursday night, starting at 6:00 p.m. So, Mr. Mayor, I would certainly welcome you to come on down if your calendar--
At the Linden School, live?
At the Linden School, yes.
Time?
6:00. But a couple of other comments I do want to make, too, as we are live, and I usually don't like to chime a lot due to the fact that we are live, I like to just listen and get done with some of the business at hand. But we are, and we all are receiving some materials, certainly outlining what I think is probably the most important piece of this post-implementation plan, and that is the important data, the important information, accurate data, as I do deem to be that piece that Councilor Christensen was referencing, and I believe the data to come. But I would certainly implore the fact that we need to have our residents take a minute, sit down with that material that they are receiving in the mail, or hopefully, some of the media will pick it up as well, and look through it. And if they have more questions regarding that, to certainly pick up their phones, or, you know, certainly sit down at their PC and jot off an email. But certainly, the information is the most accurate, up-to-date information regarding what was, what has been a very successful program for multiple reasons. And the, one of the more important parts of this has been, obviously, our environmental impact. And I want to also compliment Charlie Tomajin, because I know that he has listened to me for a few months now, and I'm going to say it here tonight again, that the next phase of our recycling efforts are actually going to hopefully roll out to be more of an improved effort in our schools, because, again, I think that's another cost savings that we can certainly see, as well as the fact that, you know, encourages the kids at an early age. So I will obviously take this minute to say, "Good evening, Charlie," and hopefully you'll get that message out to the schools for us. But, again, the meeting is at Linden School on this Thursday night, if you can put it in your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bucci. Would you like to have Councilor Tomajin, excuse me, Mr. Tomajin, come to the mic?
No, I think he's--
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Paul DePietro.
Thank you, Council President. Mayor, in addition to the blue bags, I'd like to clarify for the residents who are watching at home, we're still able to throw out one big item a week at no charge.
One bulk item.
One bulk item, such as a sofa. And you could actually do this, throw out 52 sofas.
Exactly.
Is that correct? Another clarification I would like to ask is, in regards to carpeting, because I do get a lot of calls on carpeting, that people periodically replace their carpeting, they wear out, and I'm sure the other councils get calls as well. If carpet is ripped up out of your house and it's properly cut up into manageable pieces, is that also disposable?
It's identified in the ordinance.
Four feet and length, less than 35 pounds.
Right. But it wouldn't be-- Wrapped up.
So that would actually be an improvement. I know before the pay-as-you-throw program came in, I used to get calls, and that was always classified as construction debris, and it would always be a problem, it would be hanging out on the sidewalks until we pestered Mr. Manship or Mr. Knox to maybe come up and take care of it. But as of this program here, as long as it's cut up in manageable parcels, that's able to be picked up by a human being, that would be picked up. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor DePietro. Councilor Paul Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we all learned a lesson on how we roll this out, but on the merits of the program, it's amazed me the way the citizens have responded in the recycling aspect of this program. I see, I drive around during trash days in my area, and I'm amazed at how much cleaner things are. Basically, the trash is bagged. I mean, I know it costs me $104, one bag a week, and they all recycle in my house. And my grandchildren are over the house quite often. So I think if you properly recycle, it's a huge incentive not to cost yourself money by doing recycling. Whereas a city like Melrose, $275, a city like Stoneham, $240 a year, they're putting everything out but the kitchen sink. You go through those cities, not every household is recycling, and that's the difference between the pay-as-you-throw versus the flat fee, to me. You know, I don't think any community can match the way we've increased the recycling total, which, of course, comes off the Resco dumping fees, which saves us a lot of money. We got a lot from the meetings we had. We got beat up, for sure, but there was some good thoughts.
Very healthy--
A $1 bag, $1 bag for, you know, seniors who live alone, you know, they put it out once every two weeks, once every three weeks, was an excellent suggestion. The fact that there's some people that couldn't afford it, working with TriCap, seeing that income level, you know, we work with them, and putting the $25,000 towards it, if they were at a certain income level, they were taken care of with the bags. So I, myself, you know, I made an unpopular vote, for sure, you know, but looking at the overall program, I know one thing. If we're going to decrease revenues this year, if we're going to decrease our bag revenue, then you need to come up with a million dollars on the other side in cuts. And that's no fun for anybody, especially the cuts and the reductions we made over the years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Condon. Councilor Matheson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I realize you've been up here a long time. I wanted to share with you an interesting compromise that a resident shared with me the other day, and I'm wondering if your department has done maybe any studies into it. The compromise was perhaps a coupon that would allow the household to have one free bag disposed of per week, and then you could raise the cost of surplus bags on the other end, perhaps generating the same revenue, but alleviating the problem of someone on a fixed income, someone who produces a very little amount of trash, the only one to throw out one bag. I'm wondering if you've looked into that, because, you know, looking over your numbers, you have 15,000 households, $150 per year per household. It looks like they're throwing out three bags per household.
Average.
Rough mouth.
Average. Some are higher, obviously, and some are lower.
Sure. You've got some that are getting free bags from TriCap, and you've got some that are throwing out, you know, several giant bags. But, yeah, the average comes out to about, you know, $3 per week per house. So have you looked at any kind of program, or would you? Any kind of program that would enable someone to have one free bag per week, and then raise their cost if they're going to be, you know, people who produce a lot of garbage?
Councilor, I am not stuck on any element of the program the way it is in place. I think, as you look at it, though, the clear benefit that we hopefully can sustain in whatever it is we decide to do when modifying the program is the diminution in the amount of tonnage that we currently pay for at $70. It was $78, it's a little bit in the lower 70s after the successful renegotiation. But eliminating 50% of that activity, I think, is a beneficial effect all around. So if there is a way, whether we do this program or we do something else entirely, if there's a way for the approximately 2.5 to $3 million, somewhere in that range, of impact, budgetary impact every year, if it can be derived by any other source, I gladly will entertain it. You know, I think this does present certain benefits. I think, once the community, you know, has a chance to embrace it fully, and I think one full year is a good kind of example as to how it will roll out, you know, according to what Councilor Anderson observes, I would advocate to keep it. But I would take any modification to it that hopefully keeps the accounting in similar ranges. So if we can give away a bag, we can give, you know, 35 pounds free somehow, and costs can be picked up in some other way, or expenses can be derived in some other way, or all the money in the world comes back from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we don't have to be, as I say, self-reliant as we do, then I'm all for modifying the program. All I know is, to do what it is I think we all want to do, we need the value of what this program means to us in some fashion. But I would accept any modification that made some sense and kind of kept us in the same place.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilor Matheson. Any further questions for the mayor? Okay. No further questions. Thank you, Mayor. If you don't mind, Mr. President, I do, I heard a couple of names mentioned, I would be wrong if I didn't acknowledge them as well. Mr. Tomajin in my office, who worked kind of long and hard, kind of putting some of the Xs and Os in the program together, and obviously, Mr. Knox of the DPW, who rolled out with the assistance of several other departments, Department of Public Health, Inspeccional Services, all staffing in those departments helped us be able to educate the public and roll the thing out seamlessly, so that eventually, it caught on naturally. But Mr. Knox, in particular, was a great asset to, I think, every one of you, and certainly my office, in dealing with constituent concerns and matters in the early months. I would thank the both of them for their efforts. Thank you, Mayor. Next order, basically. Sir, it's not an open, it's not a--
I was under the impression, my name is William Cullen, I'm at 11 Clyde Street, Malden.
Mr. Cullen--
I was under the impression that this meeting was a public meeting.
It's not.
It's not?
No, Mr. Cullen.
Then you people better get the thing going. Don't have people coming here, there's only about 35 people here. I jumped at it, because I've been coming to these meetings for years.
I know, Mr. Cullen.
And I never get a chance to talk, because you people don't want to let the citizens talk.
Mr. Cullen--
The mayor is dead wrong on this.
I have to stop.
He's dead wrong, and people like me should have an opportunity to take the officers here.
Recession. Chair of recess. Councilors back in order. Want to take a recess? Take a five-minute recess.
Okay, so my next order of business is poor Jack Russell.
Yep. The council will come to order. Just have a couple of councils coming back. Clerk, next order of business?
Yep. Just the clerk left.
It's Mr. Russell and Mr. Teal.
At the request of the city council, we asked the Emerson, Teal, and Mr. Russell, and the clerk of the Works for the meter, come and present an update on the water meter replacement program. So, Mr. Russell, want to come forward? Or Mr. Teal, both of yous, come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, Mr. Russell.
And I'm Emerson Teal, clerk of the Works for the water meter replacement.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It was on behalf of my request to have both you gentlemen appear and just give us an update on the, I know, the rollout implementation, any issues going on with the water replacement. I know we've had some concerns in the billing, which I'm sure the council might bring up later on, but I was more on the actual physical meters that are being put in, how much we have left, how everything's going, is there any issues with any of the meters, et cetera. So if you could just give us an update, Mr. Teal, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I have exactly eight meters left to go, out of twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two.
Very good, Mr. Teal. So how long would that take? And who are the eight?
I can give you the address. A little over three years, almost three and a half years. At a cost of, right around three million.
Okay. So you have eight meters left. How's the implementation as far as product has been working to what we expect standards?
I understand what you mean. You mean--
I know there was a couple, I had a couple residents who had said there were some issues with the actual physical water meters. I'm assuming when you're twelve thousand, anything, you're going to have some breakage and some spoilage in there. So how, how is it working overall, the twelve thousand meters?
Well, we got about, I think, two hundred, isn't it, Jack? We got about two hundred meters out there that are, well, mostly stopped. All the readers aren't working. All we're getting are the columns on the, on the readings. The meters themselves, the body of the meter, is fine. We're having no problems. It's some of the E-coders, they stop, we have to change them. Some of the R-nine-hundreds are getting wet, they're stopping, we have to change them. We have some where people are doing work on the house, cut the wire, we can't get a reading, we have to go back with that. That's only about two hundred. The last eighty meters took me longer to get them in than the first seventy-five hundred, because there were so many problems. And still some.
Okay. Any questions? I know I was the sponsor of this paper, but is there any questions for any of the gentlemen with regards to the water meters in the rollout? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Teal and Mr. Russell, just for the benefit of people that are listening, maybe you might want to give us some background on, on why we went about changing the meters, and what was the expected advantage to the new meters versus what was there before? As well as--
There, you can answer.
Emerson's throwing it to you, Jack, I see. Okay. As well as what the history was with problems with the old meters. You mentioned, out of those twelve thousand, did you say that you'd replace, you've got about two hundred have been troublesome? What kind of troublesome meters did you have in the, under the old? Is that, do you understand my question? Are we on par with, with where we were in terms of troublesome meters with the, with the old meter system?
See, a meter typically only lasts a certain length of time before it registers incorrectly. It's not as accurate. So an older meter, you know, for residents, usually you'd like to replace those every eight, ten years, max. Ours were there a lot longer than that. The larger meters, you want to replace them even sooner, maybe every three years, depending on the size. So, you know, the purpose of the meter is to get an accurate reading at each property of how much water's going through there. You know, the MWRA has its own meters, so it knows exactly how much water's coming into the city. It's up, it's up to us, then, to determine how to pay back that monies to the MWRA. With an old meter, if it's not registering properly, if it's under-registering, it's classified as unaccounted-for water. So that amount of water, then, is spread out amongst all the users, which isn't fair if you have a heavy user and his meter isn't reading correctly. The difference in what he is actually using and what the re, what the meter's reading, again, is spread out amongst all the users.
Which would mean that that unaccounted-for-water usage, the city of Malden would still have to pay for it.
That's correct.
And how would we pay for it? Out of the general fund?
Again, it's based, based on our rate system, how we set up our rates. I mean, we, you know, yearly, right now, it's roughly six million we pay for water to the MWRA. We pay another nine million for sewer. We base our, you know, how we pay back the sewer, based on water consumption as well.
So you're saying that if we've got a high amount of unaccounted-for water, you would project that into the next year's, as you set the rate for the next year, you would project the, the rate to be higher to compensate for that unaccounted-for water?
Unaccounted-for water, correct. Because one way or the other, we got to pay back the MWRA.
Well, I know that I've had a number of my constituents who have thought that their water bill was extraordinarily high, and questioned whether or not it was because of the meters. And I know that many of those folks have, have then raised their appeals to the DPW Commission to, for a hearing. What kind of percentages or what kind of numbers are we seeing with people who have appealed their water bills to the DPW and have those appeals sustained?
I mean, it's dropped significantly. I mean, these new meters, as Emerson points out, have been tested and they're pretty accurate. So people coming in for abatements, this, these meters will be able to tell you if you have a leak. And now that we're reading monthly, it gives even more reason why there's less people coming in looking for abatements. But these meters, like I said, we have, in some instances, actually taken them out, sent them back to have them tested, and they've come back that they're accurate. So I think another good reason for replacing meters is it, it promotes conservation. I mean, people, now that they're getting a true reading, they're going to try and save some, save some water, you know?
Yes. Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Councilor Frere.
Thank you, Mr. President. Emerson, obviously, and Jack, you should be commended on what you've done in the last three years. But one of the things I, is, actually, I think it was either when I first got on the council, even before I got on the council, and I don't know if it was Henry Genetti that brought it up, or someone else, but at one point in time, we were losing about thirty percent of our water at the gate because of leaks. And the MWRA was obviously charging us for it, because we were losing, that means we were losing in some way, either people were stealing it, you know, changing, tapping the meters out, or broken lines, water lines. Since then, I think it's important, because a lot of, a lot of us have benefited from it, and this is to Councilor Anderson's point, to let the public know that, I know right now in my ward, Cherry Street, Rockwell are getting new water lines. And what you've done through, or the council has done also, in the mayor's office, is taken the oldest water lines in the city that you've charted out, and you've gone back, and we've compounded that with Chapter ninety money. So we've replaced water lines, some of the oldest water lines, and replaced them with new water lines. And along with those, we've also repaved streets and new sidewalks. So I think you should be commended for the plan. And, you know, we've always said, and it was actually Council Finn that brought this up a long time ago, that said, if at one point in time, if the city of Malden had two hundred million dollars for construction of new water lines, and that still wouldn't be enough, because that's how bad a shape our infrastructure is. And, and what we're doing now is, at least, we're attempting to attack the areas that we know that there are problems. So just to go along with what, what Councilor Anderson had said, for the public, just so they know, because it, you know, as you can see the learning curve, because Charles Construction has done a lot of this work, and what used to take two to three months now seems to be taking a lot less time. They seem to be doing a lot quicker and more efficient, I guess would be a better word. So I just wanted to tip my hat to you two and for that program, because I think, you know, we benefit, I know Council Ken has, Ken has benefited, and I had to jump on Cherry Street so I can get my end finished. And I know we'll be doing that, finishing it in the spring, I hope, the rest of the way up. That's a hint for the next council that's award five, so thank you very much.
Hey, Councilor Frere, I haven't got a light. Councilor Matheson.
Thank you, gentlemen. I just figured this is a perfect opportunity for me to learn something about water meters here in the city. How many, since you just changed twelve thousand of them, how many in the, in the domiciles that have water meters, are they separated by tenement? In other words, if it's two-family home, how many of them would have two water meters versus one water meter?
We, we only have one meter per, per property. It's up to the homeowner to, if they want to break off inside, get their own meter, we're only going to read the one meter.
Okay. And they could volunteer to do that at their cost? And, and you'd go out and do it?
No, we wouldn't do it.
Oh, okay. Private contract.
Hire a plumber to do it, right?
I see.
But you got to, you got to realize that it's a very difficult thing to do. On typical two-family houses, the plumbing is interchangeable, like it goes from the basement up to the first-floor bathroom, up to the second. So it's not like there's separate lines where you could meter the separate units.
Unless it's a new construction, possibly, yeah.
You design accordingly, right.
That makes a lot of sense. And the water meter change over you just did, that's, who's bearing that cost?
I'm sorry?
Who bears that cost, the water meter change you just did? The one you just performed? The twelve thousand meters?
The three million came out of the Watersour Enterprise funds.
Right, okay.
Out of the city.
Right, that's what I assumed. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Matheson. Councilor DePietro.
Thank you, Council President. A while back, we just tried to change the billing back to quarterly, and a big issue was that the detection of leaks. Could we go back to a quarterly billing? I know I get calls on it, and it seems to be a popular thing, that people would rather write out four checks instead of twelve checks. As long as the safeguard was in there that you could detect a leak, so that was the reason that we went on the monthly billing, so a person wouldn't be surprised by a leak after it's been leaking for three months. And do you have any ideas on that?
Well, like Councilor Frere said, we, when we started this program, we were thirty-three percent unaccountable water. Right now, we're down to sixteen was the last, last figure I got. MWRA runs at fourteen. If we went back to quarterly billing, that would make, in other words, right now, when somebody has a water leak, and we pick it up, and it goes out in their bill that they got a leak, you're talking about a fifty-dollar water bill that would probably go to a hundred and fifty. If you went three months, add on a couple of hundred more. So now you're talking three or four hundred dollars. How are you going to pay it?
Well, that's my point. To the, my understanding, I mean, I think we read the meters in a, in a day.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, could we go out once a month and read the meters, and that, wouldn't that pick up a leak?
Yeah, well, how do you notify them, though?
You notify them?
We're notifying them when it goes out on the bill, it's right on the bill.
Oh, I understand how it's working now for the month. But I mean, how many, how many leaks do you think we have in a, in a, in a month?
How many in a month? It varies. I bet you we could have a thousand, five hundred.
Wow.
There's a court in the treasurer's office that thick of water leaks per month.
Okay. But, so, I don't know, if, if you were to go out there and read it, and then it would probably be a postcard, you know?
I don't know how they would set it up, but I think going back to quarterly would be defeating the issue that when we started three years ago, would be defeating what we were trying to accomplish.
All right. Thank you.
That's just my--
It's just, yep. And, you know, it's just, there is, I, I do get some calls on it, and people would rather pay four checks instead of one, if it would be possible, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor DePietro, and Councilor Matheson for the second time.
Yeah, it does seem like people prefer the quarterly. But, but anyway, I'm just kind of curious, how many of these massive leaks that you referenced actually occur?
What was that?
How often do we have a massive leak like you just referenced?
A leak that causes a big bill?
How often does that happen?
Again, you'd have to ask the treasurer on that, but, you know, what typically causes a leak in a home is a leaky toilet.
No, I understand that they're caused by, by various means, but I'm just wondering how often it comes up. If it's, if it's one in a million homes, and it hardly ever happens, then, then this conversation's academic. But if it's, if it's something that comes up quite often, then, then the monthly billing makes a lot of sense.
I'm not following your logic. But I think, again, I don't have a, a number of people that go down looking for abatements down at the DPW, but I don't think it's excessive. I think we've studied this, and we thought the monthly billing was the way to go. I mean, that's the way we've been approaching this from day one, was the monthly billing. Now, mind you, we do read in one day, but we, you know, on average, there's a hundred and fifty to two hundred problems, whether, you know, that we couldn't read it, someone during the month happened to snap the wire, or there's a box on the outside that if it gets moisture, which we've been working on, sometimes it won't read, so that's why we're out doing the maintenance items. But by the time we get the data into the treasurer's office, they download all the data, we would then have to somehow, if there's a leak, get all that information out to the homeowner, yeah.
Yeah. I got to digress slightly, because we just had Bartlett Street torn up, and they changed out these, these water mains, and I, I don't know, main, I suppose, is what the, the main estuary that feeds all the homes would be. And what started out as a two-foot circumference, because of like a century of sediment and buildup, is down to maybe a half-dollar size, you know? And people probably don't know that that's where their water's coming through. And, and it's probably safe. I, I don't know, what do I know about that? But do you have records that tell us how old these pipes are? And where they're located?
Yes.
They're in your office?
Yes. I mean, we have a hundred and twenty miles of pipe in the city. Of the hundred and twenty, thirty miles roughly was put in prior to the year nineteen hundred.
I'm sorry, thirty miles prior to nineteen hundred?
Prior to nineteen hundred. I'd say fifty percent of the pipes in the street are at least a hundred years old.
Thirty percent?
Fifty.
Fifty percent.
And just to ballpark, the mayor, you know, he's been aggressive. We've been getting MWRA funds for the last ten years, because we're in the, the last year of a ten-year program, where we've been borrowing a million dollars. Again, roughly with the million dollars, you can replace a mile of pipe.
Okay. That's very educational, I appreciate that. Thank you, Council President.
One, one thing is, you were asking how many abatements come down there?
Yeah.
In twelve months, they probably get a hundred requests for abatements, out of twelve thousand, six hundred. And out of those hundred, ninety-nine of them have a leak. Every day, I take calls down there, I want to say, eight to ten calls a day, from people who have leaks. I tell them where to look for the leak, how to find it, and they tell them to call me back the next day. Maybe one call me back, and says, "I found your leak. I found the leak, thanks." The rest of them find the leak and never call back.
Don't they have these relatively inexpensive dye tablets, you plop one in the toilet, and then you could see where the red comes out, or something like that?
They don't work as good as food coloring. You're red, red or green food coloring, leave it in the back of the toilet overnight, and you're going to find the leak. and you're going to find the leak.
All right. I hope everyone's listening at home. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Ferling.
Um, just going on, uh, Council Alaj Madison's question, um, about Bartlett Street, it's not my ward, but you brought something up, was that one of the streets that was just recently done under Chapter 90 money went MWRA?
Yeah, it was done in two phases, you know, half roughly at a time.
So there's no more quarter shift?
Can anybody speak to the mic and mount it already? Thanks, Jack.
Yeah, Bartlett Street was just completed, it was done in two phases. Um, I think what he's referring to is, you know, the inside of the pipe, you know, it's a rust, so that, you know, the inside, what used to be a six-inch diameter is down to a two-inch diameter.
All right, I appreciate it, thanks.
Any other questions? I just have one question, I owe it's for, when we, when they rolled out the implementation process, and, you know, I know, I know the number might sound $3 million to everybody listening and some of the new councils, but there's a reason obviously for that, because the accuracy and as well as the reading, we can read the entire city in a day now, which would take before a month, right? Roughly, Jack? Uh, but my question is, when they rolled it out, did, didn't the city in, um, install most of the meters, city workers? Or no, do we sub it out? How, how do we install all the meters? I, I'd be honest with you, I forget when they started.
We had a contractor.
Okay.
Who brought it down to a little less than 500.
Okay.
Then we tried city workers, and it was moving too slow, so then Charlie and Dominic authorized me to bring another contractor in from the outside.
Okay. Now, my question is this part now, when, when we're all done after these eight, who was going to maintain all the meters? Are we trained at least to go in to somebody's house in a year from now and fix the meter, or do we have to call back in the agency because of, of the, are they under contract? That's my question now, like, when we're done with the eight, what happens? Are we on our own, essentially?
Yes.
Okay. Are we, are we trained? Is, is the city workers trained to do this, or would we go back out on a contractual basis?
I'll let Jack answer.
You don't know, Jack?
Well, I mean, when you say trained, I mean, we, you know, the meter readers are trained to, uh, replace the box on the outside, or the heads on the, uh, the meters. We're going to set up a, a program to test, uh, the meters, which we haven't done yet. But, uh, I mean, the only things that can go wrong are, you know, the head on the, on the meter, the wire that goes from it to the box on the outside.
Yeah, and the, the reason why I bring that question up, because Council Christian's always been an advocate of, we always cut our maintenance expense, no matter what it is, whether it's a building, piece of equipment, or now obviously this water meter program, and it's, you don't want to wait, I think, 10 more years to say, "Let's start maintaining these things," and we have to go and basically buy all new ones. So that's, that's what the purpose of too was, once we, we're obviously done with the eight, now it comes into the, the whole fact of maintaining this new network of, of meters, so, that was my reason for questioning with that. Any other questions for the gentlemen? I see no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Till, thank you, Mr. Russell, I appreciate it. Next order of business.
Minutes from the seat council meetings of October 16th and October 13th.
On Gary Christensen's motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Next order of business.
Application for license, driving taxicab, David Lewin, 57 Harding F. Malden, John Walters, 5 Hancock Street, effort.
On Council Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred to license. Next order of business.
Order that the city of Malden reject the revised budget of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District dated October 8, 2009, and reaffirm level funding at the fiscal 2009 level of $1,474,659.
Council Lucy?
Sorry, Lucy.
Sorry. Council Lucy for the financial.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this, this tails into what the mayor was talking about earlier. When we passed the budget this year, although we gave $2 million less to the Malden Public Schools, the, uh, with the Northeast Regional Vocational, we kept at a level funding from the prior year. Uh, certainly recognizing the good work that they do up there, but, you know, we took some hits all around last budget, so we, we didn't cut the, cut the numbers in this fiscal, fiscal year for them, we kept the level fund, funded from the prior year. Uh, when they passed their budget, uh, their, uh, assessment to Malden was somewhere in the vicinity of about 250-some-odd thousand more than what we had allocated. Uh, Charlie Tomagian from the mayor's office here tonight to give a little background on how, on how this rejection works, just because we reject it doesn't mean that that's the final say, there's five or six cities that also, or towns that also have to do the same thing. So Charlie was good enough to stick around tonight to, to give a little background on how this works as far as, uh, funding the, the Northeast Vocational.
Thank you, Council Lucy. If there's no objection from the city council, I'd like to invite Mr. Charlie Tomagian from the mayor's office to the podium. Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Tomagian.
Aye.
One second, Charlie.
The way the Volk budget works is the, the Volk, school committee passes a budget, and then the cities and towns have to reject it. If we don't reject it and give them notice, then it's deemed adopted. Um, the Volk presented a budget that was actually in excess of last year's budget. Several communities notified them that it was rejected, they went back to the drawing board, then, uh, seven or eight of the communities started a meeting on a regular basis to discuss the budget, to inform that we're looking for a Volk budget. We asked them to level fund our assessments, they then decided to level fund the budget, which means everybody's assessments went up because just like the city and the school department here in Malden, they got less money from the state to the tune of, oh, a million five. They didn't cut their budget, they just passed that additional million five onto the communities. We rejected it again, we had to take a second vote, city of Malden did the second vote in June, rejected it again. There was a little bit of, um, disagreement whether or not enough cities and towns rejected the budget, we actually had a go and appeal to the Department of Education. The Department of Education deemed that we didn't properly reject their budget again. The Volk School Committee went out and voted a new budget, a thousand dollars less than the budget that we had just, um, rejected. So now we're meeting again tomorrow as a group, but we're getting all our votes in order, um, to have the budget rejected again, so we, the way the procedure goes, we have to vote on, the city council has to vote to either accept or reject their budget every time they present it to us. So the city was projected, uh, presented with a budget that they voted on October 8th, which reduced our assessment by $200 over the one that we had rejected previously. It represents a 14% increase to what we've budgeted. So we've budgeted a million, I'm sorry, we've budgeted 1,477 in that range, and they're looking for a million 683 from us. So this will be the first vote cast. Chelsea also has his schedule, as does, um, Sargus and Wakefield. So we're looking for a vote to reject the budget as presented, and reaffirm the number that we voted back on our budget.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Tomagian? I have a light, couple lights on. Council Kenne.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Tomagian. Just a, uh, some clarity, I saw something in the newspaper where somebody missed their vote on the, a timely deadline, and therefore you didn't get the majority. Is that what you're talking about with the DOE, or is that in court?
That's exactly what's going on. We, no, we, we were under an obligation to take the vote and notify them.
Right.
After we take our vote, the city clerk notifies the Volk officially. Um, when.
Sargus was at?
I believe it was Sargus took their vote, they said they did not receive the proper notification, even though we had, there were other members of the, um, advisory committee there with copies of the votes.
But they, they voted on the wrong budget or something like that.
They, they said they voted on the first, they, the Volk's position was that when Sargus took their vote, they thought they were voting on the first budget, not the second budget.
Okay, so that's why rejected by the DOE.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And what they're doing now is DOE has authorized the Volk to operate on a 112th budget of last year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to say, Council Kenne?
Yes, thank you.
Council, uh, Ferling.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Before you take the vote, I'd like to abstain from the vote. Uh, my sister was retiring superintendent of schools at the Volk who put this budget together, and I know the reasons behind the vote, and I know the reasons why there is a, a alleged, um, towns gathering against the vote, so I would, so I still get invited for Christmas dinner. I would like to abstain from the vote.
Sure, Council. On Council, uh, John Ferling's motion to abstain from the vote? Roll call? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Council Ferling is abstain from the vote. Another question, Council Neil Anderson.
Mr. Tomagian, can you give me some clarification on, uh, what the numbers are? I, I see the fiscal 2009 was, what, 1,474, whatever? What is it that we would be proposing as a cut for that? Or, or no, I'll guess, this is fiscal 70, this is 2009, so what is the 2010 assessment that we would be paying?
The assessment they're proposing in the current budget that they presented on October 8th is 1,683,090 to the city of Malden, that would be our assessment. And their total budget would be 19,936,541. 1,683,090.
090. And our fiscal 2009 was 1,470, so, yeah, they're talking about some, some, some serious increase where we have, uh...
Almost a 15% increase.
Yes.
With our assessment.
Oh, okay, yeah. Seems to me that, uh, we all need to tighten our belt around, around that, and I certainly support that, thank you.
Thank you, Council Anderson. Council DePietro.
Thank you, Council President. Charlie, uh, how did, uh, Representative Earl Fitzpatrick vote on this issue?
I understand it was unanimous vote.
It was unanimous.
For the budget.
It was unanimous, folks, he voted in the affirmative there. Um, with any clarifications, uh?
I wasn't at the last meeting, I got a report that the superintendent, based on his conversation with DOE, recommended they adopt a new budget. They adopted a new budget by cutting a thousand dollars from the budget they had proposed previously.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tomagian with regards to the Volk budget?
Yeah. One, just, we're here out of the normal course, because it is time-sensitive, we have to have our votes in by a certain time, that's why we, rather than go to finance committee and report it out two or three weeks later, that's why we've asked it to do it one night.
Do you want to adopt it now?
Please.
And, Mr. Tomagian, um, will you let the council know the outcome of the Department of Education meeting? Because that's the next step, right? You have to go back to, to?
What happens is that we reject, five communities have to reject the budget, have to take an affirmative step to reject the budget. What they then have to do, not only working on a 112th budget, they then have to adopt another budget, present it again, we have to go through the whole round again.
So, so, do you know, have any idea, I know you can't tell the future, but how many towns are looking to reject this budget? Is it all of them?
There are seven to eight communities that actively participate in these meetings that are held probably two to, every three to four weeks. Um, the towns have to schedule town meetings, which is a problem.
Uh, Council Lucy has a motion? Council Lucy?
Would be, we would say in the paper that the city of Malden reject the revised budget of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District dated October 8, 2009, and reaffirm level funding of the FYE 2009 level of 1,474,659.
So on, clerk will call the roll to adopt. Um, Council Anderson, Rucci, Christiansen, Malden.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Kenne, Lucy, Master, Spatafora. Adopt it? Substance Markian. Next order of business.
This offer is a sense of city council that the state legislature and our own state legislative delegation oppose House Bill 3434 and any other efforts to control health education from parents and local school, school boards. Councilors Kenne, Christiansen, and Master.
Councilor?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the mass legislature is currently mandating sex education curriculum, so the curriculum frameworks are available at the Department of Education, and every, uh, local community is allowed, uh, to determine and tailor those, uh, needs, demographics, and, uh, and in terms of age categories that they think are appropriate for children and not appropriate for certain material. I am suggesting that this resolve would, which is, uh, to leave those, uh, frameworks, uh, and the health curriculum and sex education curriculum at the local level, and not being, uh, mandated, uh, at a state level, uh, and further away from local control than it is today. This would change nothing, uh, from where we act, so our local school committee, uh, would have, say, an input from, uh, local parents, uh, and local community members, and that's, so I would ask, uh, everybody to, uh, please vote the affirmative.
Thank you, Councilor Kenne, do you have any else for the paper? Okay, on Councilor Kenne's motion to pass, so, votes?
Safety Committee and the Public Works Committee meet jointly with Representatives of Verizon, Mass Electric, Comcast, and the Malden Fire Department to obtain an update on the number of double polls in the city of Malden and the removal schedule. Councilor Spatafora.
That will be real brief, I think everybody knows what the idea of this paper was, uh, I encourage all the councils, if they want to join me in this paper, to do so, which is, this is just, uh, A, an update, I, I know we were waiting for some updates in Verizon and Comcast, and B, it is a reaction of an article that was in the Boston Globe North two Sundays ago, which I believe I, I've tried to contact them, uh, the numbers are of April 30th, I think they were, they were a little high, because I think we've done some great work since then, um, I think we're actually very low on our side of the equation. I still believe there is some work to be done on the Verizon and Comcast side, but in any event, I don't think they're as high as that newspaper article referenced, but I still wanted to bring them in, so, with that being said, I have a couple lights, okay? Council Christiansen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just so the council knows, two weeks ago, um, Verizon was supposed to update us with some very positive news back in the spring, that they were going to remove over 200 polls. I have yet to receive a communication from Verizon, which leaves me to believe that the double polls remain, but I can't, um, encourage my fellow councils enough, we must push our state delegation to adopt those pending bills at the State House that would once and for all finally give this body, this community, leverage, in that if a poll, double poll's not removed after 90 days, we're fining the respective company on a, on a daily basis. You know, until that happens, I think the same cycle is going to occur over and over, so, happy to see any of our state delegation, we have to keep reminding them that we need that help in order to give ourselves the leverage that we need to really address the situation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Christiansen. I have a light to my right, Council DePietro.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'd just like to bring the, uh, entire committee up to date. The last time we met, uh, Councilor Ferling and myself, with the, all the parties that enlisted here, uh, National Grid is actually responsible for the polls, most of them. Uh, Verizon assured us, uh, that, uh, they would, uh, comply with taking their equipment off the pole, and that they would, uh, actually, uh, be up to date, uh, pretty close to being finished by the end of the year. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Council Ferling. Um, uh, Fire Department, Comcast, and, uh, National Grid have done yeoman's job as far as, uh, uh, doing there, and, and Verizon, uh, assured us, so, I was kind of taken aback by that, uh, article there, that there were so many of them, I thought we were making progress all along, so, it is a great idea, uh, that, uh, Council President Spatafora bring them in before us again, so, we get an update before, we don't want to get the old chef surprise, uh, in December, we want to make sure that, uh, they're, uh, on track, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to agree, before I go out to the council, I remember that, that fall before I actually got sworn in a year and a half, a year and a half ago, I started watching the council meetings religiously, and they kept on talking about double polls, and I kept on saying, jeez, isn't there anything else to talk about? And then you get here and you see how some of these organizations can be kind of slippery on you. They come in, you know, they, they say they're going to do things, and then you kind of go off, you start doing other things, and, you know, a month or two goes by and you realize some of the stuff hasn't been done and they know where to be found. So I agree with Council Christensen, you know, anything we can do to get them to respond, because it's actually rather insulting that they come forward, and it's an insult that they tell you that they're going to do something. They walk out of this building, and they may do, they may do a few, few of the polls, but then they kind of go off and doing other things too. So anything we can do to get those double polls taken down, I'm more or less for it. And I saw that article too, and it was, it was, you know, quite alarming. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lucy. Council DePietro.
On that note of the Verizon, I mean, if they're so, if they're so intent, or they're behind schedule, they're laying off, I think, 8,000 to 10,000 workers nationwide, and maybe they could keep some of them on and ship them to Malden and other communities that were mentioned in that article. It might be a good gesture on their part.
Thank you, Council. I have a light in the far right, Council Furlong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add to what everybody said, just to pay attention to. I've had, after kicking and screaming for two years, I finally had a triple pole removed from Echo Street. And just to remind people, just to be attentive to, that they repair your sidewalk afterwards, because I still have a new pole, but there is a hole around the pole that has not been filled in, and every time you have a rainstorm, it washes out. So just be attentive to that, that they come back, because they're supposed to repair the sidewalk to the satisfaction of the DPW superintendent. But just be attentive to it. That's just a heads up. Because I haven't got it fixed yet.
Thank you, Council Furlong. I just want to reiterate one more time to the public, that article was dated on results on April 30th, and this council, I know, since I've been on the council, it's been a passionate issue, and this year I think we've done great strides to Council Furlong's committee, as well as the city that contracted the fire department to do our side of the equation, because there's three, there's three separate utilities, ours, Comcast, and Verizon, and we have to wait for those two agencies to take down their equipment and remove the pole. So we've held up our end of the bargain here, and we've brought them in and held their feet to the fire. So I think the article is a little, is wrong, because it's dated April 30th. I think it's much lower, but still, we have to revisit some of the issues we were having. So I, I don't want to make it seem like we haven't made any, any strides, which we have. So. Next, on Council Spatafora's motion to adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item is adopted. Next order of business.
Resolve, there's the sense of the city council that the traffic commission install no trailer trucks allowed since on L.A. Street at the intersection of Broadway and on Hollabab at the intersection of Black and M.A. Councilor Kenan.
Councilor Kenan for the paper.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. This has just been a common occurrence where trucks doing a bypass off of Broadway and, and off of coming down Salem Street to skip that area, oftentimes go up the back way, and those streets really weren't, were not built to be handling tractor trailers running over them. So I would like these, this motion moved.
Any questions for Council? Seeing none. On Council Kenan's motion to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item is passed. Next order of business.
Again, by the Malden City Council, if the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended by adding a new section regarding juvenile curfew. Council Kenan and Christensen.
Council Ken?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, again. I just, this was in public safety and will continue to be in public safety, but I've talked to Council Furlong, going to move it over to ordinance as well, in order to start writing up different drafts that public safety can then look at and we can discuss, because right now we have nothing in hand, other than some ideas. So we'd like to get it down on paper, maybe two or three drafts of possibilities, and then, you know, at some point, go share with the public for public input and move on from there. So just to, just to continue in the process.
Thank you, Council. I know that's a motion, or it sounds like one. Any discussion on the motion? Council Kenan, okay? Yep, I just want to make sure. Council DePietro?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Council Kenan, before we start our deliberations, I know in ordinance we have received, communicated from Chief Coy regarding this matter, and I would like to ask if we could also bring in the superintendent of schools and Dana Brown for their input, what they think about the, this information, so we can make a really informed decision on, on, on the matter. Thank you.
Council Kenan, any comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I think that that's a great idea of actually, I think that may go into public safety. Council Furlong, if I can talk, we had already talked about bringing in the trojan officer to discuss this issue as well some time ago, and I know Council Furlong was going to request that. So absolutely, we'll, the intention here is only to write up some drafts, bring some people in, and have public hearings on this, in, in order to get a sense of the public on this thing. And ultimately, I would hope that the will of the people would, would rule the day. So, thank you.
Okay. Council Cornyn has some input.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were at our meeting today in municipal building, and Dana was participating with us, and he suggested maybe J.P. Kelly and Sergeant Molus, who worked up there for years, get some input from several of the police officers that deal with these kids all the time. First-hand knowledge of where the problems lie, and they could probably add a lot to, to the meeting. Thank you.
Good idea, Councilor. So, on Council Kenan's motion to refer to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred to ordinance. Next order of business. Yep, we're going to do all the, the license papers together if there's no objections for the community reports.
The Standing Committee on Licenses, term was referred papers number 335A3A and paper number 329, series of 2009. Having considered the same, make the following report. Application for renewal of taxi drivers' licenses and application for a Christmas tree permit. Committee recommends that these licenses be granted. Council Furlong for the committee.
On Council Furlong's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Council Furlong for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we met in committee, went over all the licenses that were voted on favorably, and I think we had one or two that we sent back to be reviewed again. So the ones that appear before us tonight, I recommend that we approve.
Thank you, Council Furlong. Questions for the Council Kenan?
I just would like to abstain on, on number 333, as that is my brother, and I'd like to vote.
Okay. Do you want--
We're on the license. Those are the--
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm ahead of--
He doesn't want to vote for his brother, obviously, so. So on Council Furlong's motion to grant the license, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Licenses are granted. Next order of business. Yeah, we have to do these separately because it will all correct.
Kick it over again.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, term was referred paper number 332, series of 2009. Having considered the same, make the following report. Mayor's Reappointment of Kevin Alkins as a member of the Board of Registry Voters. Committee recommends that Kevin Alkins be reported, Council be appointed. Council Kenan for the committee.
On Council Kenan's motion for, to hear the, receive the committee report, excuse me, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Council Kenan for the committee.
I'm going to turn this over to Council Nesta.
That's right. Council Nesta for the committee.
Thank you. As with Mr. Alkins and the other candidates, per our new procedures, they were brought in to meet the members of the ordinance committee. They answered all our questions to everyone's satisfaction, and would ask that you vote favorably, as we did in the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Nesta. So on Council Nesta's motion--
To confirm.
To confirm. Clerk will call the roll.
Council Anderson, Bucci, Christensen--
Yes.
Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Kenan.
No.
This is--
This is Kevin Alkins.
Yes. He's going to abstain for personal privilege, too.
Lucy, Matheson, Nester--
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes. Now you can abstain, Councilor. I know you really didn't want to vote for him. So I believe it's now time for Council Kenan's motion to abstain. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Council Kenan is abstained. That being said, on Council, on Council Kenan's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Council Kenan? It's Council Nesta again, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilor. On Council Nesta's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Council Nesta for the committee.
Again, we met with Mr. Kenan. Based on our new procedures, it was a very informative interview, and we voted favorably three to zero. We would ask that everybody else confirm as well.
Any questions for Council Nesta? Hearing none and seeing none. Clerk will call the roll for-- Just the Kenan.
Council Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, DePietro--
Yes.
Furlong, Lucy, Matheson, Nester--
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, term was referred paper number 334, series of 2009. Having considered the same, make the following report. Mayor's appointment of Francis Conway, 414 Falls Way East, as a member of the Public Works Committee. Committee recommends that Mr. Conway be confirmed. Councilor Nesta for the committee.
Council Kenan--
Council Kenan will take this one. Thank you, Mr. President.
He's going to vote now. On Council Committee's, on Council Kenan's motion to refer the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Council Kenan for the committee.
Yes, the committee met with Mr. Frank Conway, who's got vast experience here in the government, municipal government of Malden, and this is a great addition to the DPW Commission, and the committee voted four to nothing to appoint Frank. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Council Kenan. Any questions for the committee? Hearing none and seeing none on Council Kenan's motion to confirm. Again, the clerk will call the roll.
Council Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, DePietro--
Yes.
Furlong, Kenan--
Yes.
Lucy, Matheson, Nester--
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes. The docket is clear. And last, a personal privilege to my right, so starting with my right, Council Judy Bucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, just a friendly reminder to the public that we are down in Linden having a resident meeting this Thursday, night the 22nd, at 6:00 P.M. And also just a reminder to folks that have, that are interested in getting involved in our Malden Community Miracle Youth Task Force. Applications can be, you can actually get an application from your high school principal or at the Y.W.C.A., and to have that submitted to the Malden City Council Office by this Friday, if you'd like to get engaged. So again, just a reminder that that has to be the age group that we're looking for, ages 14 to 20, and hopefully we'll have some interested residents of young folks who want to get involved in a Malden Miracle project that we're engaged in. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Bucci. Council Paul DePietro?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Paul, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to remind the residents that Friends of Oak Grove are going to have their annual haunt, John, this Sunday. Registration is at 8:30. And the race will go off. It's a walk-run family day. There's a lot of fun to be had, and it's for a good cause. They raise money and use the money for, right back into the community, much like the Oak Grove Improvement Association. So it's a good cause, and I recommend everybody go down and have some fun.
Thank you, Council. Council Paul Cornyn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take a minute to wish our city control a speedy recovery. More often than not, some of our public employees get criticized, as we do too, and it's to be expected, but somebody like Don Formano, who had a major operation eight or nine days ago, and got shipped into Boston, he knew he was getting out last night, still has these staples in, and he called his assistant to make sure that she shipped a stack of work home to him. You know, it's, it's something that we've been working with, anybody that's worked with Don, we've come to expect that, you know, but I want him to know that his health is number one. You know, no one will ever question his dedication, for sure. Also, best wishes to his wife Sheila, who's not only taking care of Don, but has some major health issues with her own mother, and she's going through a very difficult time. So we all send our regards. Thank you.
Well said, Councilor. Council Gary Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. First, just want to remind residents, Tuesday, November 3rd, please get out and vote. Ward 1 votes at the Ferryway School, 150 Cross Street, and the polls will be opened from 7:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M. I'm sure my fellow council from Ward 7 will be on site for most of the day. Also, Saturday, November 28th, we are slowly cobbling together the Parade of Holiday Traditions. I sent an email out on behalf of the committee to the elected officials, as well as the city departments. Obviously, with the way the economy is, this will be a smaller venue, but we are working to host the parade. It'll be Saturday, November 28th, from 10:00 A.M. to 12:00 noon, and it'll be the same route from the Salemwood School to Ferry Main and Salem Street. So any organizations or groups that you'd like to participate, I'd ask you to steer them our way. Hopefully by that time, many people will forget that I dressed up as a not-so-scary scarecrow this past Saturday at our first-ever pumpkin patch. I understand the pictures are floating around on Facebook, the things we do in public service. But I can't say enough about the event. We had a couple, I think a couple of hundred people in and out throughout the day, and I want to thank Carol Ann Desiderio, her family, Peg Crow, and Fugi for really helping to put this together. And finally, I just want to wish my boss, James V. DeParla, Middlesex Sheriff, very happy National Bosses Day. I know that was last week, and he's tired of me for not recognizing him for it, but I wanted to save it for this opportunity for the residents to be able to see it. And also, on October 14, 2009, he reached 35 years of public service, and hopefully for my sake, another 35 years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council John Nelson.
I'm actually coming on 35 years of life. At any rate, in light of, you know, a person who spoke out earlier, Mr. Collin, I wasn't aware, you know, there was a time when I wasn't aware that city council meetings were an open forum, and apparently they're not. You have to be sponsored by a councilor, but that being said, I'd like members of the public to know that if they have something relevant to say, and they can be brief and polite, I'm happy to sponsor people to speak at these meetings. But in addition, I received a couple letters that people wanted to express their opinions, and I'm going to be very brief, but I'm going to paraphrase for them. One is from a new resident who moved here from Somerville. His name is Michael McLean, and Mike says that the streets are poorly lit around here. It makes me feel less safe when I walk my dog at night, and if you look at statistics, there's a correlation between street lighting and crime. So maybe worth noting, but Mike, I thought I'd read that for you. And this one is Jean Shribble, and she, I'm really paraphrasing here, she says she's grateful how one of the councilors updates the residents on what's going on around the city, and, and she wishes that the council would do more of that, maybe as a collaboration. So maybe worth mentioning, and so I did so, and thank you all very much. Get out there and vote November 3rd.
Thank you, Council Matheson. Council Neil Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've gotten calls from some of the union people who are currently out of work, who have been raising questions about, you know, the participation of Malden residents working on the high school project. In particular, this was a person who has, who's a carpenter, who said, you know, jeez, we've only got one carpenter from Malden that's working on this project. And I know that we've appointed a commission, a committee, to monitor, to make-- a committee, to monitor, to make sure we've got good participation of Malden residents there. I think it would make good sense for us to invite a representative from that body to come before us and give us an update on just where we stand with having Malden people working on this, this high school project. And I don't know if you others, other councils have received those kind of concerns and been raised, but I certainly have. And I think that would be a good idea for us.
Sure. Counsel Petro, I believe, has some input to that question. Counsel Petro? You don't mind, Counsel, correct? Counsel Petro.
Thank you, Council President. Counsel Anderson, there is a ordinance committee for the construction project. It's ongoing. They monitor it. People are encouraged to get out and put an application in. If they're qualified, I'm sure they'll be considered. The committee is actually up and running now. They're looking at certified payrolls. And we expect that project to start moving on quite nicely and to employ as many Malden residents as possible.
Yep, sure. Thank you, Counsel Petro. Counsel Anderson again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, certainly, Counsel. I'm aware that we've, that we've let the committee. What my concern is, is that people from Malden, those that I've heard from, excuse me, have been disappointed in hearing that not enough Malden people are working there. So I'm suggesting that we expedite the process of having somebody come in and report to us just where we are with regards to compliance of this, of this ordinance that we have. That's what I'm asking for. Let's bring somebody in here to, to tell us just where we are in bringing Malden people onto the Malden High School project.
Well, if I could, Mr. President, myself and Counsel Cornyn are on the Municipal Building Committee. And we hear the reports, and are monitoring the actual project itself. I'm sure we can have someone come in and address the entire council to where we are on this, on this project.
That's exactly, that's what I was asking for.
Yep.
I know that I saw a car once today that a Mr., what's his name? From Gilbane, I guess, who was, who's a project coordinator, you know.
A construction manager.
Construction management company, that's right. Talked about, some of the data has been coming in, but it hasn't been compiled to report out just where we are. And I think that this is too important a project and too critical for our Malden employees for us not to, for us to let this, for us to wait for them to compile the information. Let's get somebody in here to tell us where the hell we at. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Counsel.
That is actually being done. The, the data and everything takes a while to compile. And then you have to get the contractors to submit certified payrolls. And they get submitted, and then they'll be poured over by the committee that was appointed. And we'll definitely get the answers for you.
Counsel, I've, in my professional life, have been responsible for monitoring affirmative action contracts and the participation. And so I'm aware of that process. And I just am saying that this is, you know, instead of us waiting for the bureaucracy, you know, of reports, I'm sure that the, the folks on site can tell us just how we're doing. Because the contractors, these labor people, are saying to me that we're not getting people on there. We need to be moving on there quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson.
Just if I may.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you. Being a labor person, knowing this concerns me more than I think anything else that we do around here, to employ Malden residents, especially tradespeople, in light of 20% unemployment in the construction industry. Let me assure you that we are working, the Municipal Building Committee is working to provide this data and put as many people on as we can. You'll get your report.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Jim Nesta.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the folks of Ward 4 that our next quarterly Crime Prevention Meeting is tomorrow night, 6:30 at the Oak Grove Community Center. I also wanted to congratulate Counsel Bucci on her recent mural project meeting. It's a great meeting, very well run by Counsel Bucci. And the turnout was, was pretty good, and it was very, very productive. So it's a great project to help everybody get behind it, and we can get some more applicants in the young artists that we have in the city. So again, congratulations to Counsel Bucci. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Kinnon? You abstain?
He's abstaining.
He's abstaining. If I may, I'd just like to remind all the children of Malden, I'm throwing my sixth annual holiday parade, holiday parade, Halloween party. That's in my blood, yeah. I'm telling that, too. October 30th, at the Anthony's from 6:00 to 8:30. Children under 13 are encouraged to attend with their parents. And that is it. So without any further ado, on Counsel Christensen's motion to adjourn, all in favor?
No.
All opposed? Counsel is adjourned.